You're on, Mark.
Okay, we will hold off on the minutes until we have a full quorum, but we can start the meeting with the PowerPoint presentation. Tim, you want to take that away?
Sure, so Brenna and Chandler have been working on the PowerPoint presentation. They will be the two presenters at the town council meeting on the 25th. So we met earlier in the week, making sure that we gave them adequate space. Everybody finished their exams, I think, on Monday. So we kind of gave them some breathing room. I didn't bother them at all last week, but Tuesday we met, went over the outline. So I think they're ready to show you where we are. And then would ask the group and the committee as to what everybody thinks of, you know, the presentation thus far. We get some input so we can kind of polish it up and then finish it up. So Brenna, you're the one that's going to take it from here?
Yeah, I can share my screen and show everyone what we have. Okay, so the presentation is still a work in progress. We completed the outline for it Tuesday. And then I sent out an email yesterday morning, kind of just notifying all the students on the team that it was up and to put in their information sometime before next Wednesday. So not everyone has gone on and put in their information yet, and that's totally fine. It's been like 24 hours. So it starts off with the title slide. We're going to basically go into our background a little bit, explain the flow of the presentation, explain where we're from, kind of when we started. And then we directly go into the opportunity of kind of why we were brought onto this team. These are just some notes. This is not like the final look of the slide. This is just some notes we have for what this slide should contain. I don't know if anyone has any additions they think that should be made to this slide. This is obviously one that heavily involves Tim and the other EDC members.
Quick question, are the slides meant to be leave behinds? Where you're going to leave them with the town council members? Or are these meant to be purely for presentation purposes?
I would assume that they would be given to the town council prior to us even making the presentation. So they can kind of go along, yeah.
Okay, so a little bit more detail than if they're purely for presentational purposes. Cool, thank you. I just need that context.
Appreciate it. Are you thinking about, you know, just electronic delivery? Or are you thinking about like printing it out and distributing?
Yeah, that's a, that's an internal thing. You have to decide. I'm not sure which is the best way to do it, which council prefers to have.
Yeah.
But I always find it's better when Brenna's talking. She's going to address these particular points, but they can kind of look with their eye down at them rather than maybe at a big screen up and down type thing, you know? And they can also, if it's on paper and given to them, they can also make notes.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Alright, I forgot to move to the next slide. I will do so. The next slide, we're going into basically what we did in the first semester, which is a bit of an overview on the three research points we did. We're basically just going to talk about like why we did those three types of research, a general overview of what we found from it. And then that'll be our jump off point into the actual channels that we decided to go into. And then the format for the rest of the presentation.
Brenna, could you go back to that slide and capitalize Wallingford for me? It's going to just bother me.
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, so the format of the next, basically the rest of the slideshow is going to be the two people who, or one person who ran that channel, and then it will go into the channel. So what we're first talking about is webpage redesign. So Sam and Callum's information will be on here. And basically the information we asked from everyone was their degree, year of graduation, all that fun stuff, hometown, relevant experience, and then a like professional picture.
It might be interesting, especially for Kelman, Samantha, to talk about what they're doing now, since they are both working together, capitalizing on the work that they have done with Wallingford.
Yeah, if they want, the easiest way for us to include that, for me and Chandler to include that in our script, would be to basically add speaker notes of like, in quotes, be like, say this about our work experience. So if Sam and Callum, you guys want to work on that at some point, that'd be super duper helpful because I don't know what you're doing.
And this would be a really great opportunity for you guys to let them know that, hey, you guys exist now as a business.
Yes.
Especially a rebranded business.
Identification of the rest of the committee, at least from what I understand, based on my conversation with both Calum and Samantha, they didn't know each other prior to this, you know, this whole SMT exercise. So they met here, and this has grown into a, you know, a new business relationship. So pretty cool stuff.
Yeah, in the interest of time, and I guess we're going to have to kind of time this out to see, how much time do we have with the council? Is the chairman going to give us, Tim, do you know?
We're gonna, you know, I've told them 25 to 30 minutes. So I think we really, as we're rolling this thing out, I think we should, you know, be respectful and stay within that 30 minute window.
Right, okay.
Not to say if we run over two or three minutes, they're going to chase us off, but.
Yeah. So Brenna, when you introduce Samantha, for instance, and you're pretty concise here now. So just make sure you hit the highlights and that's it. In other words, she has, she has an MBA in, or she's studying for an MBA in whatever. Architectural, I can't read it because I'm on my phone. I can't read a darn thing on her, on her thing. But in other words, try to, try to highlight it a little bit, but not make it so you're reading this whole thing verbatim. I guess that's what I'm trying to say, because you're going to have to move on with a lot of information. You'll know how to do it.
Yeah. We, Chandler and I will like make like a semi-script beforehand and run through it, make sure we're not going over on our time limit or anything like that. So we will make sure that, yeah, we're highlighting, hitting important points and spending our time really talking about the content.
Right, just for my edification, what's the MBA program in? Marketing, is it?
Marketing.
Economics.
My, my MBA program?
Samantha's, yeah.
It was just a general track MBA, but my undergrad was marketing.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Again, it's hard for me to read on the, on the telephone, so, okay, thank you.
Alright.
I think what we'll do is, you know, it's really what we plan our next meeting. I really think we should be planning a dry run of this presentation at our next meeting, you know, prior to the 25th. So we'll keep that in mind so we can time everything out. Of course, Brenna and Chandler will have timed it out. I will have met with them. And David, I know you're going to engage heavily in this exercise as well, because you and I have chatted about that. So I think, you know, we'll work through the nuances and all that stuff. And let's have a meeting of this committee prior to the 25th. We'll do a dry run so we can make any final changes, but I think we'll prepare that.
That makes a lot of sense, thank you.
Sounds like a plan.
Alright, from here, we go into what they worked on, which is the webpage redesign. Oh, perfect, you guys left us a whole bunch of notes. That's super duper helpful. So yeah, a picture, some of what they fixed, and then we'll go a lot more in depth into it.
Good.
From there, we're hopping into LinkedIn. So my information, Tim's information, it's basically the same as Sam and Callum's page, just two different people. And then we go into LinkedIn. We're going to talk both about the content creation that Chandler was doing, as well as some of the sales navigator stuff that I've been doing. And from there, we go into John and Instagram, same setup as a lot of the other pages.
Well, we have a picture of John, by the way. Will we have a picture of John?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good.
John just has not filled out his information slide.
You got it.
Then we have Jack and Facebook. And then Shay and email marketing. And then myself again, and college outreach. Basically, going to just talk about what universities and colleges I contacted, what we discussed. And then will be the next step slide, which is our ending slide.
If you would like to, I ended up having a MBA consulting team work with Rob Covey from the Wallingford School District because of the work that you guys have done. Rob heard about the incredible stuff, and he was so impressed that he's like, hey, Dave, do you have a team for me? So you guys can take credit for creating more partnerships.
Oh, that's great, yeah, that should be added in somewhere in the, in the dialogue for sure.
Correct.
If you need me to send like a quick write-up on that, I will be more than happy to.
Yeah, that might be helpful.
Make a note.
It might be, it might be better to do it when, with, with the two partners getting together into a business. You know, in other words, you've got two separate things going on, but they both were meaningful from this exercise. So I think it was Samantha, right? Was it Samantha who got it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, and that is the slide presentation.
Fabulous. This, this allows for some questions and hopefully some good answers when, when the council sees this. It's a good start off point, it really is.
So Mark, the, the idea was to have, you know, some timeline to this. So as Brenna laid out, it was, you know, this is how this started. This is what, you know, the fall semester provided in terms of understanding, you know, project scope, research, analysis, interviews with businesses, et cetera. And then come January, the infrastructure has been, been developed, start with a soft launch. As we all know, that certainly I, and I think another few people in the committee are disappointed, we're not a little bit further along, has nothing to do with the SMT. It has everything to do with resources here. But, so we're, you know, kind of, kind of pedal the, the spring, you know, semester here as a, as a soft launch and a, you know, deliberate and purposeful entry into this space so that we can make sure that we, we, you know, do it right. We don't create any unknowns in terms of, you know, brand damage. Everything is, you know, on the up and up with a more positive and aggressive approach once we hit September. And hopefully we'll have that resource onboard, you know, whether it be by the beginning of the summer and be able to run hard, you know, in September. And this becomes part of the, you know, EDC's marketing DNA go forward. So that's kind of the timeline that we tried to lay out, so.
Yeah, is Joe still on board to give us an introduction? And are you still on board to kind of wrap it up?
Oh, yeah, no, I certainly will, you know, the, I think it was your suggestion that you and Joe intro, and then I wrap it up. Yep, that's, that's the plan.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'd be more than happy to be involved, but I don't want to stretch the time out that I'm doing an intro. So I, I, Joe can do it any way he wants. But I think Joe, being chair, should say, you know, we are trying to find ways to market the town. We've had billboards in the past. We just have to take it to the next level, and this is how we feel we're taking it to the next level. You know, something along that line, kind of setting the stage for Brenna to come in and do her, her part.
Yeah, yeah, I think it'd be a good idea if you, Joe, and I met just to make sure that we talk about the points that we want to make.
Exactly, yeah. So, and that should, for, for Joe, it should be just scripted out for him. He'd be more than happy to have it scripted for him with all the key points, you know? So we can do that, yep.
Any other thoughts from the team as far as, you know, the track we're on with the, with the PowerPoint presentation?
I think it's a great job. I think it's going to be a very meaningful presentation. I think some people are going to be sitting up in their chair saying, oh my God.
Yeah, and I think it's going to be a good presentation.
Alright, again, you know, objective is certainly to introduce the council to the work that's been done. And this, you know, this is a new venture for the town of Wallingford. I think for most municipalities, frankly, I don't know that many municipalities are doing this, if any, that I'm familiar with. So I think that's, it bodes very well for us. But it's also a, an opportunity to highlight the student team. And I want to make sure that we, that those slides reflect that, that this is your opportunity to brag about who you are and what you've accomplished. So I want you to not be shy about that. Alright, Brenna, Chandler, you guys need any other direction as you're putting this together?
Not right now.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Okay.
On to the next item, Tim?
Yeah, so just, I wasn't being rude when I took that phone call while the presentation was being made, but it was Rob Fritz saying that he did not have, did not have the link to the meeting. So I, or he misplaced it because I know he got it. But anyway, I just, I sent it to him, so I'm a little surprised he hasn't signed on yet. So anyway, thanks.
Is Anthony on? Not yet, okay.
I know he's muted, but he says he's.
Anthony in the chat does not have a microphone. So he is on and listening, but he cannot talk to us.
Okay.
Alright, I am here, okay.
I get it, I get it, I'm getting it in the chat, yeah, I see that.
So we'll, we'll, we'll save the minutes, I guess. So, alright, that's, that's a PowerPoint presentation. So digital channel progress reports. We've been doing a little bit of work with the website. So Callum, if you wouldn't mind starting that off. And I know, Mark, this is kind of new, but you can see Stacy is on the call. So she has been working with, with Callum and Samantha about some website changes. She's been the interface with Web Solutions, our vendor. So a few things to talk about there. And also Stacy is going to be, she's taking the minutes. Where in the past, I've taken them and then translated them, and, but we're getting that step out. So anyway, thank you for joining us this morning, Stacy. Although your name is not Kevin Coons, we know who you are. And so why don't I turn it over to Callum for an update on the website?
So where we left off after our meetings with Web Solutions and Stacy, we had relayed our changes to the new, for example, the logo grid to Web Solutions. And they got back to us with several different quotes for the amount of the costs for implementing the work that we had asked them to do. And so from my understanding, where we are right now is we are now in a place to make a decision based on the quotes that they gave us on which elements of the work that we want them to do, we're going to actually move forward with. And other news too, so we finalized the logo grid for all the companies that we want included on the featured section. And at this point, we, I think we're trying to decide whether or not we add the current image slider as an option to hide rather than just completely delete, which is one of the things that they recommended. And other than that, I believe we're moving forward with adding the logo grid as a, as one of the definite options. Tim, was there anything else that I left out?
Stacy, there were, there were three elements you just wanted to talk about. So there was the, the business rotator.
Sure.
Can you, can you share your screen, Callum? So that, you know, maybe go on and pull up our website so we can kind of point, point the committee to the elements we're talking about? Because we're very familiar, but maybe a good idea to remind them.
Yeah, let me do it.
These changes are coming in at a price tag just under a thousand bucks. So what we want to make sure of is that we are all in agreement that we make these changes and don't have to go back and amend anything else. Because this gets expensive pretty fast, so.
So this is where we're talking about adding the grid of logos of the featured companies that live in Wallingford. And so what they had, they had given us a quote to add that grid of logos. And then they had also given us the option to add four logos in a slider at a time. And so I think we had, we're heavily leaning towards the first option and having all 12 logos in a three by four grid here instead. In addition, one of the other quotes that I'd given us too was the option to hide this slider here rather than completely delete it. And in which, in whatever case we decide in the future, we would have the option to show it again. I'm personally of the mind that we don't need to show this again. And I don't think that, I mean, this wasn't a part of the original design that we had supplied them. And so this is something that they had come up with. But I don't know that we need to pay to be able to potentially show this again in the future. And then lastly, the other change that we had asked them to make was adding the company logo of the company rep that we're using a testimonial for. And so they had offered to either put it to the right here or beneath the, beneath the company name. So that's the third element that they had given us a quote for.
So any, any questions from the committee or any of the members of the SMT?
So I just want to understand, so number one, this is on the list that was sent to us, recommended updates to the website. Number one, we probably don't care about keeping Radiol on for the future. If we want to, we'll add it, but we don't have to worry about hiding it. Is, is that what we're saying?
No, so, so we're actually, so number one is we're adding a completely new grid of logos of the featured companies that we feel represent Wallingford and add some.
Oh, you know what, Callum, can I just stop you for one second? So I didn't forward this to you, Callum, and I apologize. But number one for Mark on the form that he has says hiding the business rotator. Number two says adding the logos to the testimonial ribbon. And number three has the logo grid. So that's where the confusion is coming from.
Gotcha, okay. That makes sense. So yeah, in that case, number one is hiding this image slider right here that we're looking at right now, this carousel. And so that's, that's basically coming about because it was something that, you know, wasn't in the first round of changes that we'd asked for, that they had recommended. And after showing this to the committee and everyone else, we had unanimously decided that it wasn't something that we wanted to keep. So they're providing it to make it an option that we can hide and then show again in the future. But I personally don't think that we would need to show it again in the future. So I don't.
From my perspective, I agree with you on that. So then number two is adding the logos. That's the eight or 12 logos that you wanted, that we wanted to add on to the pages. And that's the one and a half to two and a half hours. Is that right, Tim, am I right in saying that to you, Callum?
I believe that's number two, yeah. I don't know what the time specific was, but that was the grid that Tim just showed up, showed to the camera on that paper.
Right, that eight or 12, okay. And then number three is logo grid display, it's right here, 12 logos. It said it will be editable so that we can update the logos as we need them. There's a desktop version four by three, there's a mobile version three wide. They said it would be four to six hours, anywhere between $480 and $720, I guess, depending on the time they need to do it. So you're suggesting that we do that and keep that going the way it is, right? I mean, I have it as number three, but you.
Yeah, I think that should be our, our first priority out of these three elements.
Okay, good.
Getting that logo grid up, for sure. And that was, that was our first idea here.
Okay, and then on the bottom with number four, it just says estimated cost. So either Stacy or Tim can tell me, was this just an addition of everything if we took it all? Is that what it was? Or is there more to be done with this $960? I'm not quite sure.
That's Stacy.
No, that would be for all three of those items listed.
Okay, good, it was just an additional, great, okay, thank you.
And Stacy, does that include adding the logo to the testimonial carousel?
That does include the logo, and that includes our capability to put the rotator back on. But if you don't want that capability, then that would lower the price a little bit.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we need it personally, but if anyone has, you know, a reason or idea for why we might want to add it back, I'm open to hearing, but.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. This is my perspective, and I welcome some input from the committee. I, I agree with you. I think number one for us, which is hiding the business rotator, let's just forget about it, not worry about it. We want to add that, that logo to the testimonial, and then we want to have the logo grid of the 12 logos. So it'll be something, it'll be something like $700, $800, I guess, by the time we, we do the spending, if we do it. Any, any input from the committee? Anybody have any thoughts?
No, I agree.
This is, I dialed in on the phone as well. I don't know what happened to my microphone here, but. So are you suggesting that you want to just delete the slider rather than just hide it?
Yep.
So with, it's, it's kind of a WordPress-ish sort of format. I actually had a website on their system before. And I had access to the backend to go in and make some, some, some pretty minor modifications to it. With the slider, if you delete it and you completely take it off, if you ever want to put in a slider again, because the slider, the slider is something that you can modify. If you ever want to put a slider in, you can change the whole look of it, images and so forth, and you kind of have it. So to simply turn it off takes it off of the viewable website, but you still have it. I don't know if in the future, there may be something that you want to have a slider for, and you already have it, and you wouldn't have to pay to have them re-establish a slider. It's just, just a thought. It's, it's a toggle switch. It's an either on or off kind of a thing. So I don't, is, I didn't see the quote specifically, or is there a substantial charge to turn that off?
A hundred dollars. Hundred bucks, hundred bucks to, to hide it.
A month or just one set?
One time, one time.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a lot of money to do that. So, yeah, I guess for the hundred bucks, holy cow. Hope you never have to add another one back in, it'll be much more than that.
Yep.
Yeah, if you have to rebuild it, you're absolutely right, will be a lot more.
I, I tell you, you know, as an aside, you do have the option to enter the back end of your website and, and learn some things in that. And it, like I said, it's, it's very similar to WordPress. It just has some, you know, some unique things about it. But when I had a website on, on that platform, I was able to go in and make some minor changes. I had somebody in the office who was, had a little bit of training on it. And, you know, it is quite simply going in and toggling that off. So, you know, for that effort, when you have somebody engaged on the team to do that, you may want to have them learn a little bit about the backend of that system so you can go in and, and make small changes like this.
So a part of our evaluation process on doing this, before we even approached Web Solutions, we actually went through the backend and Stacy and I and Tim all went through it together. And then Stacy and I looked at different options when we were evaluating how we might implement parts of these elements before we even asked for a quote. And I actually also spent time going through it myself. And so with whatever current version of the way that the site's being built, we were not able to do any of the elements that we wanted, make any of the changes we wanted to with the elements that we got quotes for. And we, yeah, asking them for quotes was, was what we had to turn to because it wasn't possible with the C panel. So we did, we did evaluate that as a, as a part of the process, for sure.
Gotcha.
And they did say the cost for this is high because when they hide the rotator, they are going to create it so that I can go back in and I can flip that switch. And then we can make any, we can put in whatever images or whatever we want in it. So that's why it costs a little more because they're actually making it so that I can go in and turn it back on, or whoever.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I, just out of curiosity, Callum, maybe as, as an aside, if, if we can get together on the call and hop in the backend. I had, you know, I don't know what you see when you go to the backend of yours. I know, I remember what I saw on the backend of ours. We had some, some, some opportunity to make some changes. So what they allow you to see versus what I was able to. versus what I was able to see may be two different things. Um, but again, you know, we're, we are where we are now, and I just uh, I'm sorry if I prolong the decision on this, I was just curious.
Yeah, no worries, um.
I think what we're, what we're uh, and I don't want to publicly you know, uh, be unjust to the, to the vendor, but um uh, yeah, they, they, they charge a fair amount of money to do, you know, some stuff that's what I'm, you guys are convincing me is relatively simple, so I don't necessarily feel that we're getting the best value, but I think we've got to get past that, just so, let's get this thing set. Seems to me that based on Stacy's uh comment a second ago, that it does give us some flexibility. Bottom line is, it's a hundred bucks. Um, you know, again, if we ever decide to change it in the future, it's going to cost a heck of a lot more than that to change it, so. Um, I I think my recommendation would be, we don't certainly don't need it now, so no disagreement there, but for the flexibility, um, it's probably a small price to pay. Probably recommend just let them do it.
So what you're suggesting, what you're suggesting, Tim, is let's just keep it then? Um, and if we want to bring the radial screen back in three months from now, we already have it there, it's just hidden.
Yeah, that's a radial screen, it's a functionality, so we could use that functionality for something else, so. What we're putting up, what we're proposing to put up is a, you know, a grid of twelve logos that are stayed. As a move assist, and then if we decide to do something in the future where we want to take and and rotate the logos or do something, you know, a little different with that space, we'll have the ability to do it. Um, and it costs us a hundred bucks at this point to have the ability to to make that a movable component of the website, so.
Right, I I I I, um, we can talk about this forever, I guess. I just want to get it straight in my mind. We, this, this allows it to be a movable component of the website, not necessarily with radial. So if we wanted to put in some other business other than radial, we have the function that we can put it in, because it's movable, but it would cost us more money to put that other person or that other company's name in and whatever we want to do. Is that correct? I just want to know that. Callum?
Uh, no, so it it wouldn't, it wouldn't cost us any money as it is to change what the company is. The issue is that we don't have any purpose really for having a an image carousel that shows off one image. Um, and it's actually, it's not good user experience practice, best practice either. And so the idea to have this slider um, didn't come from us in the first place, it came from Web Solutions, it was their recommendation after we'd given them the first implementation of our uh redesign. And they recommended it, and after showing it, after we got the result and we showed this to the entire committee, we all agreed that it wasn't something that fit with our uh design, and it didn't fit with our um, our objective either. Uh, the whole purpose of having the company logos as a part of um showing what best represented Longford was add social proof and to recognize hopefully people when they come across the website would recognize and um associate with some of the logos that were showing off. And so having, for example, just an image of the front company of radial doesn't really build that um social proof or uh credibility that we're looking for. And so the, the logo grid is entirely separate and does a lot more than that, but um the question that we're, we're uh talking about right now is whether or not um, we delete it entirely, or we, what they want to do i- is charge basically for the ability to um, have it as an option to hide or show it, whether or not we choose to do that. So what um, what I think Tim and Anthony were talking about is I, when we de- when we delete it entirely, we're losing the functionality of the image slider um entirely, so whether or not that's the company uh office front or another image set entirely, we're losing that functionality rather than just um rather than paying them to hide or show it, in which case we'd have the option to show it, uh show image sliders in whatever, whatever other format we'd want, but um personally, I can't foresee another case in which we'd want to do that, but um, because again, this isn't it's really not great user experience best practices anyway, so um but i- if you guys foresee another option in which we'd want to use that, then it may make sense.
Does this affect the user experience at all? If we kept it, does it affect the user experience? They hide it? It's not on anymore. Does it affect the user experience? Do they have to do an extra click because of it, or any of that kind of stuff?
No.
Okay. Then i- for the hundred dollars, I think we should keep it. Um, because I thought it was, we always had to bring ra- radial up. And if we know we have this in our, in our toolbox for the future, um, for the hundred dollars, I think it's worth the investment. My, my opinion.
It might also uh help to know that the radial logo is on the grid.
Yes, yeah, 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 it wasn't, it wasn't the company as such, it was just, I was thinking that we always had to pop them back up. And if you wanted to change to another company, now we're going to charge you another hundred dollars or whatever it is, you know? And we can go down this rabbit hole forever, you know, but you're telling me, no, that's not the case, we're just hiding it, and it's a functionality that we'll have in the back uh back office whenever we need it, that type of thing. Thank you. Uh, anybody else on on this subject and I'd be interested in knowing uh tak- taking like a little vote to find out where we're at on it.
Just real, real quick and not to beat a dead horse, um, Callum, you're saying that it's not a good um user um, you know, friendly thing to have on there, why?
So the, what I'm saying is that the image slider like this isn't great user experience best practices at all. Uh, and that's because it requires people to click through to see a lot of different images rather than showing one relevant image. Um, beyond that, I mean, there's no text associated with it either, so it's just I guess an option to include a bunch of images that all represent or associate with one thing. Um, in which case, again, most, a large majority of people will not ever see beyond the first image, because people have very short attention spans. And so if you want to see, if you want people to see something because it's really important, you would never want to put it um in a slider, because the odds of them actually seeing it are pretty low. Does that make sense?
Yeah, makes perfect sense, I.
So where do we stand as far as the the committee is concerned? Do we want to keep it, or shall we can it? Patricia?
I vote to can it, uh but let the majority, you know, vote well.
It'll be majority for sure. Anthony?
Yeah, can it?
Okay, is, is Rob on?
I am, yeah, I mean, I, 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 it it sounds like from what Callum is saying and everybody else, it's not necessary. Um, but to your point, if we can, if if we can just turn it off, and that does the same thing as canning it, and we have it for future reference, not that we'll ever use it for a hundred bucks, I, I, I voted to to keep it, but just turn it off for now.
Okay, uh I, I I tend to, Tim, where where are you on this?
I think we just turn it off and and keep it. I, I, you know, I'm thinking about, it it could be we could use it to, let's say the chambers have an event, we want to, we want to be good stewards and promote it, we want to, it just gives us a little bit of flexibility, and I think frankly, for a hundred bucks, I, you know, I completely understand and respect Callum's position. You're, you're the expert, and I totally get it. But we've already spent more than a hundred dollars worth of time talking about spending a hundred bucks. I just think, just, just tuck it, tuck it behind the curtain, and let's move on, is my opinion, but I would, I would just hang on to it.
How, how much am I getting paid for my time on this meeting now? I, I didn't realize that, let me.
He didn't say whose money, he didn't say whose money.
I think, okay, let, let's end the conversation. I think we should keep it, and we'll go from there. All right, and Callum, we're all set with the uh, we could just scroll to the um logos on the testimonials, so. So that's um, they're going to be.
So here we're adding the uh, we're just adding the company logo to, um, I I think on desktop versions, it's just going to be to the right here, and then uh obviously when we go to mobile, we don't have the same space on uh width wise, so we would add it beneath, but.
So they're saying it's going to cost us three hundred bucks to put those on there, in your opinion? Do it, not do it?
I mean, I think, I think that's pretty expensive, but um, yeah, I I mean this, this is something that, you know, it wa- was actually a part of the design and that um we had all agreed that we wanted, so this, I think, is easier to justify then.
Okay, yeah, all right. Then I, I think we're good on all three subjects, uh Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Then uh we'll go along with the the suggestions as such and let the let the fees be levied, let's see.
It's a, it's a gulp and a swallow hard, but
Yeah.
Um, you know, we wanted to have the conversation so that we do it once and be done with it, because going back to them, the redo stuff gets pricey fast, as we see.
Anything else on the website?
Um, yeah, I just want to recommend one more time, if we're already going to be in communication with Web Solutions and asking to make changes. Um, I'm not sure if Shay had discussed with anybody about adding the newsletter signup link, like a section that just says sign up for our newsletter, so that people from the website have the capability to have access to the ongoing email marketing.
It's important. That's right, that's important, we want to do that.
Yeah, so maybe even just asking them how much that would be and or if we had the uh ability to do that on our end.
I was speaking with Shay, and she has created um a pop-up that would come up on the website, and she was going to come on, and I thought she was going to be here today to talk about it, but um, so she created a pop-up. It has the EDC logo on it, and then you can put in your email, you can select your category, and I was hoping she was going to be on.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I I forgot we had mentioned the pop-up was the, the better um way to go about that, so I just wanted to make sure we hadn't forgotten that.
That's just being done with MailChimp, right?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that should be really easy for Web Solutions to implement.
Okay.
I think they all are, but they, they see opportunity knocking, Callum, right?
They never said it wasn't easy, they just said.
This one, this one is just copying and pasting in some code, so I I'd like to see their justification for more than thirty minutes of work.
We need you to review all our bills from now on, that's what you need to do.
I'll audit all the bills and quotes.
Yeah.
Okay, what do we have next?
Oh, frankly, I was going to segue into Shay, but uh now I do realize that she is not on the call, so I'm going to send her a text in a minute, but um uh, let's see. John, why don't you talk about uh Instagram, please, give us an update?
Um, so for Instagram, um, we're close to a hundred thirty followers, which is kind of short of the goal that I was hoping for. Um, but with that, um, I've been having some trouble getting um people to follow the account back once I reach out and follow them. Um, and the main issue that I've seen is that people will kind of take it as like a a follower to add to their, to their ratio, and they're not following back. Um, so I kind of have to find a new market to target, rather than kind of um like the, the age group that I was focusing on, I kind of need to look into people that won't, won't focus on the ratio as much. Um, which isn't really an issue that I assumed I would run into, but um um, a good thing that I have found is that the uh, the likes are increasing, which is definitely an improvement, because um prior to um other posts, we've seen very low likes. Um, and then the, the most recent one has the most out of, out of all the posts by a lot. Um, so that's kind of a, a good sign that the followers are um meaningful followers, like they're people that are going to interact rather than people that are just following, and they're just going to um see the post scroll or not even see them at all. Um, so kind of just going off of that, I kind of have to um look for a new way to find people that will follow the account back, that will provide value to it. And then from there, um, those people will also bring, bring likes to the account, which um, which will help the account grow. That's kind of all that I have.
Questions or comments? John's presentation. Okay, who's next?
Sorry, I muted so I could talk to Shay, send Shay a message. John, our, our goal was to take and and um uh double our, our uh followers, and how many followers did you see we had at this point?
Uh, cl- close to one thirty.
Okay. Okay, so we're, you're, all right, so we're looking to get to about one sixty, is that a reasonable number?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Um, if, if I didn't run into the issue with people um not following back, then that would have been, that would have been easily um achieved. So I kind of have to go back, and the, the past, the past day and a half, I've been trying to like um, find the, the new group, but we, um, I'm trying not to run up the the following number very high, because then it's going to create a bad ratio for us, which kind of doesn't establish the credibility that we need to establish. So kind of looking for a way to grow the follower, the followers without um, people not following back, which is going to bring our ratio up for a reason that doesn't really um, have bring any value to us, because there are people that we're following that aren't, aren't even seeing our posts.
So um, in, in terms of uh groups, you are going to go out and try to find more and more Wallingford businesses that had Instagram accounts? That's our target audience?
Yes, and then from there, um, find people that follow those accounts that are bringing value to those accounts that can also bring value to ours.
Okay, all right, sounds like you're on it. Okay.
You all set, Tim?
Uh, yes, I am, I'm sorry, Mark, yeah.
Okay, no problem. So who's on next? Is Shay or who's on?
Um, well, we want to go back to LinkedIn. Um, so Chandler, you want to talk about LinkedIn? We had some targets in terms of uh audience growth there from the last meeting?
Yeah, um, we are now at uh a hundred ninety-one followers, so again, we didn't quite make it to the follower ratio that we were looking for, but um, we increased our followers about uh fifteen, I believe.
Yeah, on the Sales Navigator end, I think I sent out around a hundred twenty-five invites. So the turnover from that wasn't great. I've been going back and editing our messaging with the invites, and I have seen an increase in like responses to us with the new messaging. Um, which more so focuses on bringing them to the uh LinkedIn, like Wallingford page, because the problem with Sales Navigator is it mostly invites them to, like, it's linked to Tim's account, because you can't necessarily link it directly to a business account. So we have to put in a link to the business account. So the messaging at first was more so focused on like following Tim's account with like a side note of like, we also have this business page. So I've been editing the messaging to more focus on follow this business page. Um, and it's definitely seen a bit of an increase. I think that has helped.
Okay. So just a general comment, I think, um, you know, is, is um, you guys are done with finals now, and and um hopefully you have a, a little bit of breathing room. Uh, I'm going to ask you to really step on the gas pedal on some of these initiatives uh between now and, and, you know, we're, we're probably looking to kind of wrap up for the summertime pretty soon. So uh probably not surely after the town council meeting. So um, because we, you know, what we had said right from the get-go was uh that we would, you know, do this right through May. And then um just reevaluate to see where we're going to go, which the committee needs to do. But uh I'm just going to ask you that to uh just redouble your efforts at this point, let's see, um, you know, uh what we can do in terms of getting the uh, you know, the, the follower
Yeah.
numbers up, okay?
I've been focusing mostly on Wallingford, uh like business owners at this point. Um, so I'm making my way through the list that you sent me, um, on like the CT business page.
Right.
Um, so making my way through that, and then I will be starting in on C-suite individuals.
Okay. Alright, very good, and just as an aside, uh you, you know that we're paying, I don't know, eighty-some odd bucks a month for the Sales Navigator, so. Um, I'd be interested in, 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 you know, your opinion as to whether that's something we should continue to use, is it an effective tool? Is it, is it generating, you know, that value or not, so uh, uh and we are doing that in a month to month, we did not sign along.
I think that Sales Navigator is an effective tool, because if you look at some of the people that Brenna messages. They also line up with the people who like recently followed, cause they give you both lists.
Yeah, I think it's a, a good tool, I do think at some point you will hit like a plateau where you kind of run out of. Meaningful people to invite, I don't think we've hit that yet and I don't think we're very close to hitting that yet, because we still haven't started in on the C-suite list. But I do think it is something that will eventually not be needed, but I think that's still in the future.
Okay. Alright, comments from the committee?
I do wanna mess uh mention, Tim, that when we send out invites, some people, not many, but they do respond back. So I need to send you um the link, there are like two people on Sales Navigator who messaged wanting to like, just like chat. So I will message you that link to get to those, so you can look at their responses and message them back as needed.
Okay. Great. Alright, so um I did send Shay a text that had not heard back from her, so apparently uh something's come up and she's unavailable. Um, so we will not be able to do the, anything, any update on email. Uh, channel, other than I think Stacy's already added uh that Shay is, did the pop-up or doing the pop-up for the website. Has she done that or is she doing it?
She has it created, I gave her the changes that we asked her to put on that were just aesthetic, but um. We were just going to see if everyone liked it and if we think that it's something that we should put on.
So could you just explain the experience, uh Stacy?
So what will happen is when they go on to the website, a pop-up will show. And at the top, it has our EDC logo, underneath is where they enter their email. There's a drop-down box where they can pick whether it's manufacturing, retail, restaurant, other, and I think there was one more. And there is an option for them to just hit an X and avoid it altogether. Or they can enter their information, get added directly to our MailChimp email list. It'll go into the proper category and that way we can organize our emails that way through MailChimp. We looked into the pop-up issue where I know you used to have to click at the top right corner if. To allow pop-ups for the site and things like that, she said that shouldn't be a factor. And there is not an option to not show again. So like sometimes you go on to a website and there'll be a little square that says, don't show this again. But that way they enter their email and they enter their information, so.
So Sam, is that, um, any, any comments on that?
Um, no, that sounds. Right, I also, I'm not sure if I was gonna have a separate report, or maybe I should have interjected when we were talking about the website. Um, but I have some Google Analytics to share.
Okay, alright, so just before we move on, so the um, uh the Web Solutions pop-up that's gonna go on the website. Now we're, we're kinda cross-pollinating our platforms now, right, so I, I think that I like that idea and that's the whole idea, so, great. Alright, um then why don't you go ahead, Sam?
So really quickly, um I just was benchmarking from the thirty days before. We had started as a team um in October. And before we had made any changes, and that was what Callan and I had originally looked at to see. Just where we were at in terms of the website and then make recommendations based on that. And then I also compared all the information that I found there to where we are right now in the last thirty days from yesterday. And I just wanted to say that we are up in terms of sessions by twenty-six percent, which is great and. The average session has changed on the landing page specifically, the business page, from fourteen seconds to a minute and forty-three seconds. Um, and that just goes to show that people are actually spending time and. Eng- engaging with the content that we've created, because I think it aligns a lot more closely with why they're brought to that page. And I think that has a lot to do with where they're um finding like the, the source that they're coming from. And yeah, so the bounce rate, the sessions and bounce, bounce rate kind of go hand in hand. Because our sessions have increased, the bounce rate has also decreased, um which is huge, because that just goes to show again, like. A bounce rate is um similar to the drop-off rate, but the number of people that interact with the site. Versus who shows up on the page and immediately clicks off, that's the bounce rate. And that has gone down significantly um from, for like sixteen percent, and that's a pretty good metric right now. And so I think we're headed in a good direction and that just shows that the changes we've made um are justifiable by the data. And that's also something that we can share in the presentation and I can add some of those for Brenna and Chandler.
That's good news and, and your last sentence is what I was thinking, yeah, so as we're presenting or you're presenting. To the council, it's not just a chronology of what's taken place and what's been built, but let's, let's show some results. So you, you just shared a couple of things where people are staying on the, on the site exponentially longer than they were before. Um, so you know, bounce rate is lower, the stay rate is higher, which is really what we're, we're driving for, so. And I think as part of the presentation, Brennan, Chandler, you guys are weaving this all together and everybody else is sending information in. Keep in mind, the council needs to see how all of these individual channels work together. Woven together, right, in, in, into a, into a complete digital presence for the town of Wallingford.
Yeah, Sam, um I think those numbers are important to include, like not just in what Chandler and I are saying, but actually on the slides. If you wanna make a slide after the like website redesign slide and put in like the increase of. Like how long people are staying on the website, how many people are visiting the website and stuff like that. And then John, just for the Instagram part, maybe put in uh follower growth numbers. That can be added a little closer to the date of the presentation, just so it's as up to date as possible. But just to keep in mind that that would be a good uh bit of information to have.
So in my mind, I'm, I'm saying that, um so again, there's that chronology, you've, you've go through, you go through your presentation. You've, you've introduced the process, you've introduced the, the infrastructure that's been built out. Uh, we've already gone to the, the wheres and whys and all that. And then what a great wrap-up slide or i- is to say, and, and these are some of the outcomes that we're experiencing right now. And we haven't even, you know, stepped on the gas all the way, right, so um I think that's a good way to kinda, you know.
So do you think?
Your presentation and segue. Final comments.
Then do you think um what would be best would be included, instead of including follower counts and the. Uh, Google Analytics numbers, like right after talking about those sections? Do you think having a whole slide that's like on all of our pages, these are the follower counts and these are the Google Analytics, so that we talk about all those numbers at once?
I think specifically for the website, I can just, like it's a, a one metric kinda thing, like. You can just show one percent change and that justifies a lot, so I, I can just throw that directly into the one slide, I don't think it needs its own.
Okay, I guess I'm more asking, should it be on the slides? Like should that be on the website slide, the Instagram numbers be on the Instagram slide? Or should at the very end of the presentation, we have one slide that says all of the numbers and it's like, this is the growth?
I think put it with whatever um medium you're talking about and then at the end concluding slide, just reiterate that. The data shows what improvements are made.
I was just gonna say that, absolutely, yeah, uh it's, it's better to give them the information in pieces, especially when it's analytics. Because all of a sudden they're gonna be snoring and you, and you wonder what's going on. Uh, so if you give them in pieces, they'll, they'll, they'll be able to digest that a lot better. And then at the very end, you're just, a- a- as it was just said, you're just reiterating what you brought through in the presentation. So if they wanna see all the numbers together, that can be right at the end.
Yeah, and I would also suggest that um, you know, numbers, I know this group well enough to know. You start throwing numbers and they start getting analytical, they start, it's really not where we want their minds to go in this meeting, so. Um, it's not the numbers necessarily, it's the significance behind the numbers, so we've, we've, we've built an audience. So we'll work on some of that when we, you know, put, put together what your thoughts are and when we go through a couple of edits, we'll, we'll work on that, but. Getting into deep number stuff, it's just gonna take the, the objective of the meeting is to educate them as to this initiative. The whys, why are we doing it, how did we do it, you know, and then here's where we are. And yes, we've, we've already seen some nice, uh nice progress, uh without showing them a slide full of numbers that they're gonna start to digest. And dissect and, you know, a hundred seventy-nine followers may feel good to us, but someone may say, that's all you got? And, and you just, it becomes so subjective from their standpoint, we've gotta be careful, but we'll, we'll walk through that. Okay, any, any other reports from the uh, um Brenna, I don't, has there been, there hasn't been much movement on the um. College outreach, right?
No, I, I did hear back from one community college eventually, it took them a while. Uh Gateway did reach out to me, uh it had taken them so long because their career center has been going through. Um, a lot of employee turnover and rehiring, and so the guy who was taking over. Uh, has been having to go through a lot of emails that have been like super backlog. Um, and so he had like just gotten to my email from January, uh like a couple of weeks ago. So I talked to him, uh I think where we're at with college outreach is, at this point, college is out for the summer. Um, there's not a whole lot going on in like career fair news and stuff like that. Um, what I would suggest is reaching out to the contacts I've already, like I have all the contacts kinda written down. And what we've talked about over the past semester, uh would be going back to that in August or September. And re-contacting people and figuring out what they're doing for the fall semester and then getting a jumpstart on it. Uh, and getting that information out to businesses like as soon as possible.
Excellent, okay. Any other comments? Not subject? Alright. Any other general comments for the student marketing team?
No, uh you're going to um excuse the team now, right, to go into the rest of the meeting, Tim?
That would be my thought, I just wanted to ask Sam.
Why don't we set up a time though that we uh.
So from a timing standpoint, uh Mark, I would say our council meeting is on the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Alright, so Chandler and Brenna will be making the presentation. It'd be nice if everybody could uh put it in their calendar and join that meeting um electronically, if you, if you can. It does start at six thirty PM. Uh, and Stacy will make it a point to make sure that everybody um on the team gets the council agenda for that meeting. Now, the council packet, since we're gonna be sending them a, a paper copy of uh the PowerPoint presentation. And again, this is all public meeting, so it's public meeting protocol. Uh, the council packet, I believe, goes out on Friday the twenty-first. Which means that we need to have everything done and completed no later than Thursday the twentieth. I would recommend that we have it done and completed a day before that. Which is a week, uh is the nineteenth, which is next Wednesday, right, so. Uh, all of a sudden you can feel the time window going like this, right? So um I think we should meet as a committee, Mark, uh next Wednesday, the nineteenth, to go through a final. Uh, run-through of the, the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay. Were you looking at the same time, eight or eight-thirty, something like that?
That certainly works for me.
I, I have a Wallingford collaborative that I'll get ahold of Kathy on and we'll, we'll change that. So uh, and that's uh, what do you wanna do, eight or eight-thirty?
I think eight-thirty is uh works for the, for the team, I think the last time they preferred eight-thirty to eight o'clock, but. Um, so let's, let's talk about availability, um is there anybody on this, in this meeting right now that cannot make next Wednesday nineteenth at eight-thirty?
I'm free.
Alright, so it sounds like everybody on the call can. Alright, great. Alright, then I think we should.
Tim, did you, you said when, uh what, Tuesday the eighteenth at what time?
No, nineteen, Wednesday the nineteenth.
Wednesday the nineteenth.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
What'd you say about the twenty-fifth, Tim?
Twenty-fifth is the council meeting.
Okay.
And that's at six-thirty.
Six-thirty, thank you.
I'm sorry, Anthony, was it, was the nineteenth at eight-thirty, good?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it is, I have to move something, but I can uh, I can move it.
Can you repeat the date for the presentation and the time?
Date of the presentation is Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at six-thirty PM. Tim, I think we've got our next meeting locked in and Chandler, Brenna and team, obviously you're gonna be feeding them information. But uh we are now on a fast track to finish it up, polish it up, and the objective of the nineteenth is going to be, we can keep it a single. A single subject agenda and that is the PowerPoint presentation. Um, so hopefully you guys will have this thing completely built with the appropriate art, photographs, et cetera. It's in presentation mode and um you will have on your own timed it out in terms of uh your presentations. You, you will have decided who's going to present which slides. I would say for your timing purposes, you should probably make sure it stays, I'd say twenty minutes. And that allows the additional ten for Mark for your introductions and um et cetera and our, our wrap-up. So that sound good to everybody?
Yep.
Tim, just real quick on that uh town council meeting of the thirty minutes, um there, that allows time for questions and answers, they'll just add that to that time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tim, uh at what point do we know where we stand on the agenda for the council?
Well, that's a, that's a great question, um so they passed a budget uh this past Tuesday night. That was not in sync with the mayor's budget, so the question becomes, is the mayor gonna veto the budget? It has everything to do with what the priority becomes on the twenty-fifth, so. Uh, but I will talk to uh the council chairman. And remind him of this, this, this initiative and, and see if we can't start with it as opposed to uh have it lower on the agenda, but. Yeah, you gotta keep your fingers crossed on those, so. Just for the students edification, a six-thirty meeting, if, if we are not first on the agenda, could, you know, bring us up at seven-thirty, eight o'clock, I mean.
Yeah, have a, have a Starbucks in your hand, you may have to. Triple shot for until about midnight, so.
Yeah, possibly, I'll try to convince him that setting the tone and it, it'll set a positive tone for the meeting if we go first. But uh, alright, very good.
Thank you, uh Professor and students, I appreciate it and we'll, we'll see you next week.
Thanks, guys.
Alright, thanks very much.
Members can stay on, we're gonna move on with the agenda.
Thanks.
Tim, you're the host, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good.
That's one of the reasons I wanted to make sure I was.
Yeah. Okay, um Fairfield uh Hartford County Business Journal?
Alright, so I just wanted to, uh you know, we talked about this at the EDC meeting. Um, I, I thank Mark for engaging me in between marketing committee meetings, um but we did see a, an opportunity now that. You know, business activity has been vibrant and I'm excited to say that, it's, it's. We, we're, we've got a fair amount of projects from, you know, small stuff to pretty good-sized stuff, to the huge stuff frankly. Uh, in the hopper right now, so um that, you know, as we came out of February, it was like, okay, things are really starting to pick up and wind up. So let's, let's get back in the market with some advertising, so uh we do have with the Fairfield uh County Business Journal. And the um, uh Westchester County Business Journal, we are doing the news at noon. If anybody wants to see any of those, Stacy can certainly forward them, uh but what it, what they are is, and we've done these before, but these are the email pushes. That go out to almost twenty thousand people at noon time every day between both of the publications. And um what we've got on there is, is Stacy, actually, let's, let's send one to the committee at some point so they can, they can see it. And, um, what we've got on there is, is Stacy, actually, let's, let's send one to the committee at some point so they can, they can see it. We've got, um, two blocks in the middle of this email push. One block on the left is an ad talking about Wallingford, something that, you know, you've, you guys have seen. And on the right is a direct link to our video. That says, why would you wanna, you know, move your business to Wallingford, so. Um, this has not come without the requisite, um, you know, growing pains. So, uh, and Stacy has been magnificent with that, but right down to, you know, the ad fonts are too small, we, we, you know, we saw that. We said they're not readable, you've gotta make some amendments to that. To the fact that they, uh, uploaded our video because of its size through YouTube. So then when you click on our video, you get a YouTube commercial before you get our video. And so, um, we've had to go back and say, okay, that's not gonna work for us, we don't want the YouTube. So anyway, Stacy has been quarterbacking that. You have anything to add, add to that, Stacy?
I believe as of yesterday, they have finally fixed both of them, so that, I'm gonna check today. And as long as it's all fixed, I will forward that one.
I appreciate it, thank you. Stacy's been doing a magnificent job, by the way, for everybody's edification and, uh, multifaceted, so.
Thanks.
Great addition to staff. Um, so that's that, and, um, the Hartford Business Journal, uh, I had challenged them, this is even before. You know, in, in February before we said, you know, let's, let's re-enter the market. But I had challenged them when they were asking to run some traditional stuff, I said, I'm just, I'm not gonna do traditional stuff, I mean, you, you gotta get creative, you gotta do something different. So the objective is that all of our ads historically have been. Us, the E D C marketing committee saying to the business world. Why, this is why you should move your business to Wallingford. So now I wanted to change it up and say, I want the business world to tell the business world why they should move their business to Wallingford. So let's talk to some of the businesses who have recently moved to Wallingford and, and let them do a testimonial campaign. So, um, that's the objective, we started with Hobson-Motzer. Who obviously put together a huge facility up in Barnes North, uh, back in twenty-eighteen. And, um, uh, so we're putting the finishing touches on that as we speak. Uh, but what it'll do is we'll have a, um, a double truck ad, which is two facing pages. Uh, in, in print, but more importantly, we'll do something electronically. Um, where on one side we'll have, we have a, a nice photograph, they sent, you know, photographers up to Hobson-Motzer. Anthony is in the, in the photograph along with Bruce Dorak, the president and owner, along with, you know, his leadership team. They've got a nice picture of them outside in front of the Hobson-Motzer sign. Uh, and then underneath it, you know, some quotes and comments from, um, from that team saying, this is why we decided. This is why we moved our business to Wallingford, Connecticut. And then on a facing page, we'll have a regular ad that talks about, you know, location, access to workforce, you know, low power costs. Uh, et cetera, et cetera, so, uh, stay tuned for final versions of, of that. Um, and we, we go from there. Any questions on that particular item?
Okay, marketing specialist.
Oh, okay. Um, so I think Stacy saw the, uh, elation in my face yesterday when H R walked in with the, uh. Uh, job outline for this position, um, it has been, uh, it has taken an exorbitant amount of time. I will, because we're in a public space, I will leave it at that. But, um, we are, we are finally, uh, we have gotten the commitment from them to have an ad in the marketplace by Monday. So, um, all I will say is that, uh, we put together a job description in March. And we'll have an ad in the paper, uh, right out in the, you know, job boards, et cetera, on Monday, we will also, um. Uh, we will also take and make sure that we, we have these things formatted, the job, uh. Formatted in such a way that we can put it out on all of our digital channels. So, you know, we'll take some responsibility for promoting that position as well. It is a nineteen-hour-a-week position. And, you know, the job is going to be, you know, managing, uh, digital channels, managing digital channel messaging. Um, and so that, uh, you know, Anthony is, and, and others, Patricia have made it very clear early on in this, this whole endeavor that. Yeah, you, you've gotta be consistent with messaging in terms of timing and there's gotta be a cadence to that. Um, we do not have that cadence right now, um, because as I mentioned earlier. You know, things have really picked up on, on, on the other side. Um, so finding the time to get all this stuff, uh, accomplished is, is been, been difficult, but. Uh, we gotta get this person in so we can get that focus going and, um. Um, so I would hope that, um, you know, by, you know, June or so, uh, we may have a, a good person in place. I will say that the biggest issue, number one by far, that I hear in the marketplace right now is companies cannot find help. So, um, it is, uh, I, I was, frankly, went on a little bit of a rant yesterday at a, uh. Uh, Greater Navin Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Committee meeting about the fact that, um, you know. Institutions like the chamber, uh, need to take and be lobbying in Hartford to, um. Make some significant changes to get people back to work. You know, I'm kind of grown tired of hearing everybody talk about restarting the economy when, you know, we can't get people off the couch, so it's, it's, um. It's a, it's a significant problem, but, uh, that said, I'm hoping that we get some responses to the ad. I will tell you that other positions at Town Hall, um, the number one problem they're having is they're not getting responses for the jobs, so. Uh, it's, it's creating, Stacy, what did we hear yesterday? Our purchasing department is down to one person or something?
Yeah, um, we just heard that one of the ladies is stepping away and so. Yeah, we're gonna be down to one person and a filler.
Yeah, that's a four-member department, so it's, um, anyway, it's, we'll, we'll, we'll see what, what happens, but, you know, you're not, we're not gonna catch the right person if we don't have a line in the water. So we gotta get the line in the water and that, uh, should happen, uh, come Monday, so stay tuned for that.
Ti- Tim, further to that, in your follow-up with the town council, your, your portion of town council. I would mention, we're out looking for the specialists and that specialist is going to be working on the media and nineteen hours, you know, that type of thing. It, it, it does two things, once is, we're, we're not building a base and just abandoning it, I mean, we're, we're really gonna work this base. And the second thing is, I think it's a, it's a testament to the administration for, um, putting the commitment behind this. And, and the E D C for putting the commitment behind this to promote the town of Wallingford, and I think that's really important to have in your. In your talk at the end of the council meeting.
Excellent, excellent point. Great opportunity to give them, um, credit and thank them for supporting us through our, our budget. Cause they've supported this position through, yeah, their, their passing of our portion of the, the, uh, the budget, so great, great point. You know, Mark, with the, uh, couple of minutes that we have left. Can we just talk about the, the, uh, S M T? So when we started this whole thing, we basically said it was going to come to, uh, um, you know, it would stop in May. But here we are, right, so, um. I'd like to just talk, to talk to the group about, you know, what your thoughts are. I, I know several people, you know, Callum has already said, hey, I'm off and running in my business, so I, I suspect that's gonna be a bit of a sayonara. You heard today Samantha's actually working with Callum, that's strange, you know, who knew, right? So they, they met, uh, in this committee and now they've formed a business relationship. Uh, Samantha's also, uh, applied for a job in South Korea to teach English to, uh. And which, you know, we have provided, I provided a, a reference letter for, uh, for her for that, um. So there's been a lot going on behind the scenes with, with the team, which is really, you know, pretty cool stuff. But at some point, I guess we have to say, all right, we're gonna hit the pause button, and this has to do with, you know. Compensating these folks as well, so we hit the pause buzzing button and we re-emerge in September, I mean, what, what are our thoughts?
Well, I'll lead off, I, I think that, uh. We should continue. Um, and it's not now, but we have to develop a thought process of how we wanna continue, I mean. The first part was, we gotta build the base, we're building the base now, and now how can we improve on the base, so I'm not quite sure. We're gonna utilize their time as much this next time as we have this past semester. Maybe we won't need as many students, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I think we have to sit down with the professor and, and get his ideas on what he thinks is necessary for us is also. Um, uh, which brings me to the point too, Tim. I'm not sure, we paid about seven thousand dollars for this, right? Is that in total, is that what we did?
Yeah.
Um, I, I, in my mind, I think that's, that's an unbelievable price for what we got. I, I don't think, I don't think anybody could dispute that. So I think at the town meeting, you should mention that, um, and if you don't feel comfortable mentioning it. Um, I just think that you should mention that we got them at great value and, and that's it, you know, but. I think that, that speaks volumes, if you say, look at this whole, everything we just presented to you cost seven thousand dollars out of our budget. Um, this is how we spent our budget, your budget. Council, I, I think it makes a big difference, so. Patricia, do you wanna say something? I'm sorry.
No, no, I was just agreeing with you, you're absolutely right, a great deal, and, and we should mention it. And there's so many like, uh, you know, town, at one time they thought we spent all this money on the billboard and I'm realizing, you know, got free. So yeah, it's just good to have that information out there, cause we are, we are very good with our money.
Yeah.
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 Go, go ahead. I was, I was gonna say, you, you do have, uh, underclassmen who are moving up, um. Do we have the, uh, or, or should we maybe have some of these guys? Um, maybe make some recommendations for some additional, you know, kind of new blood, people that they've, uh, you know, fellow. Students who they think highly of, maybe get some recommendation, recommendations from them and. And some endorsements for working with the town on, on the, uh. You know, a lot of people do internships, this is real life stuff, these guys are really doing what they would do in the field. You know, on a day-to-day basis, so I think it's, uh, I think that they got as much out of this, uh, less little. A little pocket change, very little pocket change it seems, but, um, I think it's a, uh, I think it's, might be a good way to go to, to kind of bring in some new blood.
Yep, good point. A comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna make mention and, uh, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting, uh, my apologies, and Tim, I did find the, uh, link finally, it's. The way my email server, uh, hides previous emails anyways. Um, following up on your point, at some point in time, I know we're measuring, we have metrics such as. Our conversion rate, our bounce rate and some of these other metrics. But I think ultimately have we come up with a, some sort of a metrics, whether it's. Um, an inferred metric or an actual measurable metric that we can measure the entire impact of this program platform. Um, on, uh, on, 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 versus what we used before on successfully bringing more businesses and interest to the town. Um, I'm just, I'm just thinking of a question, if I were on the council, ultimately I'd say this is great. Um, we have a lot more people looking at our sites and Instagram, but ultimately, what's the impact on what our initial objective was? To bring more businesses and interest and, and into the town? Have we ever developed that metric yet, or?
Yes, so, um, and it's, it's, it's about context, so it's about outreach. It's gonna be measured by, frankly, how many people do I get that are sending me emails that are reaching out through the channel saying, I wanna talk to you about growing my business, uh. How many, you know, what's my phone traffic like? So it's all about interactions, we're trying to create interactions with this office.
Excellent, that's, that's great.
And do we measure that, Tim? Do you, do you have that? Last year we had, uh, one thousand seven hundred, now this year we have two thousand five hundred.
Yeah, yeah, so on the, on the bottom of the monthly E D C report, there's a little, little grid that talks about, you know, the different channels, whether we got something through advertising. We'll have to take and reformat that, I think, as time goes on, but that basically talks about different, uh, you know, interactions that we've had on a monthly basis. And again, it's not a matter of pure numbers, I mean, it's, I mean, I've had months where I've had, you know, three interactions. But they're sizable companies, I mean, so, hey, I'll, I'll take, I'll take three big ones as, as opposed to, you know, thirty small ones almost every day, right? So, it's, it's, it's not purely mathematical, it's a matter of quality leads, so. And Samantha was the one that helped establish that criteria early on, it's, it's, we, we've gotta, how are we gonna measure our success? Well, we're gonna measure our success based on the number of leads, but, but the number of quality leads that we're getting. So, uh, that's, that's, that's the metric.
And I will say, we're seeing this and I, I, and Anthony, and I'm sure you're seeing this in your business as well. As the, uh, as we move forward, we're seeing more and more young, younger generation people move into the engineering roles and move into management roles. And we're seeing a continued shift from a, an older perception and how business is conducted to a newer perception. Rightly, wrongly, whatever, but it, it's being, it's, it's happening, you know, whether we, whether, uh. Uh, for, for, for all the reasons of digitalization of the younger generation, so. I think this is an issue, a platform that we had to take and you're gonna see continued success as we go on through the years, so. Uh, I guess what I'm saying is this is a program that we need to give two or three years and really support it. And then measure it, it's not something we can measure in, in, in only one year, so for all those reasons, I totally agree with Mark and. And you that we need to continue the, to invest and support this for at least another two more years.
Yeah, you know, two, uh, two metrics we may wanna think about, and it, it sounds like you're doing it now, Tim, is. One metric is the number of touchpoints, in other words, how many times did my office get a phone call or an email or. Somebody met me on the street and said, you know, I wanna talk to you about something, Tim, that's a touchpoint in my mind. And let's say for argument's sake, this past month you had a hundred touchpoints. So at the end of the report you put in, I had a hundred touchpoints. The other one would be, um, the businesses that have actually come out of a touchpoint. It may have been six months ago you had this touchpoint, but now the business has made the commitment and they're coming to Wallingford. And is that measurement that we should use tax dollars that it'll bring to the, to the town? Um, is it the number of employees, is it the size of the business? There's gotta be one metric that says, yes, we had twenty of these small businesses that represent X amount of dollars. Or we had three larger businesses that re- represent X amount of dollars. I, I think that metric we have to decide upon, that can be meaningful to somebody to understand. And, and, uh, and then use that on a continuing basis, you know? But, uh, do I make sense, or?
Yeah, yeah. The, the wheels are turning, the, the tricky part about using a grand list or, or, um. Direct taxation, it, it gets, it gets a little bit snarly in that, you know, the grand list is gonna grow this year because of reevaluations.
Right.
So there's other, there's other elements to grow on the grand list, so that, that's, the grand list is an indicator, but that, that cuts both ways. If, if the evaluation, you know, this being an evaluation year, if the evaluations happen to go down. Because of market conditions, so that as a result, the grand list goes down, for example, every office building in Wallingford, their value went down significantly this past grand list.
No.
That doesn't mean that we're not doing our job, that, all right? And if, if they happen to go up exponentially, that doesn't actually mean we were, we had any influence on that either, so. I understand what you're saying, we've gotta come up with some measuring sticks that, that, you know, can almost directly. You know, we, we can directly relate to some of the activities that, that, uh, that we're pursuing. It, it's, it's certainly not a direct, uh, um, direct response medium that we're, you know, we're using. So we're, we're, we're basically, it's called, I look at it and say, this is brand expansion. All right, we started this whole thing by saying, Wallingford is the oasis of the state of Connecticut. All right, we've got state agencies whose job, whose sole purpose is to promote this state beyond its borders to try to attract people to commit it. But as soon as they cross the border, they have a reputation that is extremely difficult to overcome. And, and it just, it stops conversations, so what we're saying is, as they go beyond the border, we're not discouraging them from doing their thing. And we wanna make sure that we stay close to them and get any, any crumbs we can from those, uh, those efforts, but. We're an oasis, we, we are so different here that we wanna be out there doing the same thing they're doing. And, and digital is the best way to take and, and again, expand the strength of our brand. We could have an impact.
That being, that, that being said, you, I mean, you gave the reason why we are doing what we're doing now, how we came to this point. But I think that we all should put our thinking caps on and think of some kind of a metric that we all can agree upon that can be. Described fairly easily, you don't wanna get into craziness and, and, uh, that's a, and, and I agree with you on the grand list, there's no two ways about that. But some kind of a metric that says, I had so many touchpoints, that'll be an easy one for you, cause you, you had so many touchpoints.
Yeah.
And the second thing is, well, those touchpoints represented this month. With X amount of dollars or X amount of employees that came into the, that are being hired within the town or some kind of a metric. I, I don't have that metric in my head, but that's why I'm asking everybody to kind of think about that.
Sure, sure.
I think, I think one of the things is, um, because of the work that they've done, we're gonna see more, more people visiting the site, so we'll be able to see. You do get a record of how many people actually visit the site. And as she mentioned at one point, it went from, I forget what she said, thirty seconds to a minute and something, or, or one of them did. So you can start to gauge how much time they're spending on what pages and what they're actually viewing. Who's actually going there, you, or will either get their, um. You are, will either get their, um, their, their, their I P number, or you may get the name of the sites that are coming to visit you, I don't remember how that used to, how I used to set that up. But that'll give you, you know, a good gauge to see, ju- just that visibility, just the time that they're spending on there, because people don't, they do have a very short attention span, and if they are spending a minute or so on the site, that says a lot, you know?
Right.
Yeah, and I think ultimately, we can even come up with our own metric, but to, to the point is, we have to keep it simple. You know, once this is a novelty to the council, and it could very well be over the next several years, we're gonna wanna expand this, we're gonna wanna ask for, go back to the council and ask for additional funds to create a more permanent position, or maybe even expand that position. So we need a simple metric that everybody is, it's, it's a, uh, whatever that is, and we can combine it, we can make up a metric, a new metric. But it has to be something that we can tell them, this is the success, it doesn't matter whether there's a, a billion people looking at our websites and spending hours a day, if it doesn't translate to some sort of a success contribution to our tax base to Wallingford. So, um, and ultimately, we, we have to make sure we, we come up with that, and that we, uh, it keep, keep it simple, measurable. So anyways, yeah.
I think that does matter, because we went from like fifty people a month looking at our site, if we go to like several hundreds, that is an achievement within itself, that really is visibility and people seeing what, what's going on, what we have to offer.
And that may be part of the.
Yeah, yes, but again, ultimately, our, our, if it doesn't, our initial purpose was to, to bring more businesses to the town, create a higher, a better tax base, a more vibrant community. Ultimately, to my, my opinion, it's, if, if everybody in the world looks at our website, but it doesn't translate to, to fulfill any of the original, uh, objectives, then it, it doesn't really matter. I mean, it's, it's a nice exercise, but it doesn't, well, unless, unless we decide to change what our objectives are. But I'm just trying to, uh, stay focused on our initial objectives, that's all. We can always change them if that's, you know.
No, I get what you're saying, going from nothing to something is something, it's, it's, it's a lot. It says a lot, you know?
Well, I think you, you have the, uh, uh, objective of informing, uh, anybody who is a potential candidate. So the success of the website and the number of hits you have, and the quality of those hits is gonna be one measure. And then your close ratio from those who actually engage and are interested. Uh, and then how many of those actually result in a, um, in, in, in a business coming to town? I mean, that's really the, you know, where the rubber meets the road, but I think there are, there are multiple, uh, metrics, you know, that, that you wanna track. Uh, it's, it's, I don't wanna say it's a numbers game, but on some level, it's a numbers game. You have, you go from fifty hits a month on your website to seven hundred, you know, the number that you close ought to go up. You know, and that should, should naturally show a result. Well, it, it should, Anthony, I'm just suggesting that we have to make sure it does, and if it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't mean that we cha- all that means is that perhaps if we're getting a lot more hits, but it's not translating to more businesses moving to town, uh, then we have to, it's just not, don't throw out the platform, it's, how do we change the platform? Why aren't they converting, so, you know?
Yeah, one thing we didn't do, which, I don't know, might be something that we might look into in the future is, uh, to have a form on our little section there, so that if you did wanna contact, Tim, hey, what's your business name? What are you looking for, blah, blah, blah? That would give a direct, direct link as to someone going on the site and a business looking to go further.
You know, just to throw this up real quick, and I know time is of the essence, but, um, I know when I go on the sites now, there's a lot of times where, um, I'll have a little pop-up on the bottom, uh, of a live person that says, hey, would you like to chat? So, for example, those are the types of programs where we may go back to the council and say, hey, we need somebody on a more permanent basis, we're getting more hits, but they're not converting, so do we have a person that's available to engage these people when they're actually live on the site? Um, but anyways, I, I, that's just a thought for another time, uh, more discussion in the future. Yeah, guys, we've gone a, a little bit over, I have to jump, I've got a, another meeting I need to prep for.
And I, and I do also, so I'm, uh, to thank everyone for joining the meeting, and we'll see you next week.
Everybody have a good week.
Great discussion, thanks, everybody.
Talk to you later.